Welcome to the August 25th Board Meeting. Good enough, wait just a second, sorry. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Start with a salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Patchisky?
Here.
Mrs. Flomgren?
Here.
Mrs. Shaken?
Here.
Mr. Kormack?
Here.
Mr. Crawford?
Here.
Mr. Merkelbaum?
Here.
Mrs. Raj?
Here.
Mrs. Serena?
Yes.
And Mr. Wurz.
Here.
It started tonight, President's Report is usual, so I'd like to welcome you all back to our board meeting. Thank you for attending. Hope everyone had a great summer at Penridge. It's been a busy summer. I'm proud to announce that the agenda, on the agenda tonight, a new five-year contract for Dr. Angelo Angel. Over the past two years, we have worked with Angelo and his team, and they have exceeded our expectations. He continues to focus on what makes a school successful and has been well received by the staff, students, and community. It is clear to me that he brings the vision and actions needed for the future success of Penridge. So I'd like to congratulate Angelo on that. We'll do it formally later. We are already seeing some impressive results from our staff and administration. Last year, our AP program made incredible improvements over prior years. Here are some details. The total number of AP exams taken by our students increased from nine hundred thirteen in two thousand twenty-four to one thousand fifty in two thousand twenty-five. That's a fifteen percent improvement. The total number of students taking AP exams also increased from four hundred seventy-five to five hundred seventy-three. That's a twenty-one percent improvement. And more importantly, the total number of students passing the exams was ninety-three percent. Over the last four years, our average pass rate was eighty-two percent. And it's an excellent improvement. While this is excellent news for our students and will save them the cost of college, it also will reflect in higher school rankings in the future. AP exams, taken and passed, take up about thirty-five percent of the total ranking score. Higher school rankings also have a positive effect on property values, something every homeowner values. During the summer, our administration, administrative team, has been hard at work for planning for the new year. This team is dedicated to improving the outcomes for all students. There are a few areas I would like to mention. We are now standardizing the way we obtain and analyze data throughout our schools. This will allow us to better focus on those who need extra help and to understand where we need to improve our curriculum. This is key to making sure every school student is successful. I am thankful that the administration has embraced this. As without accurate and effective data and focused metrics, it is much harder to improve. Also on tonight's agenda is agreement with the Upper Bucks Technical School. This is a direct result of our superintendent bringing new ideas to the table. Starting this year, Penrith will make available six internships to Penridge Tech Schools to students to experience, to get experience in their chosen field. Our school will provide real-life experience in areas like AC maintenance, plumbing, food service, and many other fields. It's another great way to strengthen the relationship and partnership with the tech school. One topic we continue to work on is reducing our operating costs. This will continue as we face a declining enrollment over the coming years. We will not just wait until budget season, but will continue these efforts throughout the year. Every position opening will be evaluated for its necessity. We will provide greater detail throughout the year on ways we are reducing costs. This summer, we began a concerted effort to bring back those cyber students in our district that do not or intend our in-house cyber school. There are many benefits of the Penridge Cyber School, including a Penridge diploma, sports clubs, in-house guidance centers, many more. During the summer, we were able to get twenty-four students to leave the cyber charter school with the resulted savings, which resulted in the savings to the districts of over four hundred thousand dollars. We will continue to prioritize accountability throughout the organization. Our three-year plan completed last year is just a start. We are insisting on measurable goals with metrics that can keep everyone updated on our progress. It is important to show trends that only multi-year data can provide. Thankfully, I do believe we have the staff and leadership to make these targeted improvements. Thank you, and I wish you well throughout this upcoming school year, which actually started. Okay, moving on. Go on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Wurz. First, I'd like to address the time of the board meeting this evening. So if you take a look at our legal ad, the meeting was set to begin at six-thirty. It was on our website. Unfortunately, we did not update board docs, so we did not want to violate the Sunshine Act, so we just pushed the meeting back thirty minutes. So I apologize if that caused any inconvenience. We did our best to communicate quickly, but we own that, I own that. So board docs was not updated. It is updated for September, and September's board meeting will begin at six-thirty sharp. So as we start the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we already have lots to celebrate. This year, we will again, once again, start out each meeting with a few minutes of celebration. But before we start, I would like to have a moment of silence for the following individuals on the screen. The first one is Mr. Jim Hausman. We lost this summer. He was a security guard at North Middle School. And Cassie O'Reardon was a student in our WOW program, which is facilitated by the Bucks IU, but she was a Penridge student. So we lost both of these individuals. So if we could just have a moment of silence, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you. Before school started, there was so much work being done behind the scenes, just like every summer here at Penridge. One of the most visual projects can be seen best from the air. A new track in Penridge pillars was installed at Helmand Field, and both teams of residents have been utilizing it for the past month. This morning, thousands of our families helped our students get ready for the first day of the new school year. And then they hopped on their buses for an always reliable ride courtesy of our transportation department. This summer, leaders of our transportation department also took a closer look at routes in our district. And a result, we now have a more efficient system for our students and families as well as our drivers. Our heartfelt thanks go out to our amazing transportation department headed up by Ms. Jessica Kraus. Many thanks to everyone who welcomed our students upon arrival to make the school and opening, this school day memorable. Here's to wishing everyone a fantastic school year. So I had the chance to travel along with Dr. Palmer. We went to Siler, West Rock Hill, and North Middle School and Grass Elementary. So it was really, couldn't be everywhere at once, but the entire administrative team was out. Dr. Bloom and supervisors went out to various schools as well, so just to welcome our students, and we'll continue to do so this week. This summer was also a busy time for our Human Resources Department as they continued to recruit and attract top talent to Penridge. Two job fairs were held over the summer, bringing more than fifty candidates to our campus. And our HR team was also at community events in purpose to meet even more of our residents and tell them about the exciting careers here at Penridge. We had another successful administrative team retreat, a new teacher induction last week, and new employee orientation. Another thing we've added, well, let's just take a look at the screen there. There's various things going on throughout the summer. So we installed Panthill Zoom cameras in our district boardroom, a new audio system that will be fully operational in September. Our technology department was busy servicing thousands of laptops and redistributing, redistributing them for students. Over the last few weeks, our fall sports teams and the marching band who can get in ready for their seasons, we wish them good luck and look forward to celebrating their successes at future meetings. Our crews were very hard at work inside our brand-new STEM classroom, and we are proud to report that it is totally finished and students started working on projects today. As you may remember, this new room replaces the metal shop and maximizes this space for state-of-the-art manufacturing as well as entrepreneurship for the products students create. Last Monday, the auditorium was filled with our staff as they returned and attended our annual convocation. It was a great success, and we shared our common mission of alignment, legacy, and innovation. It's always energizing to see our amazing staff gathered as one team, ready to hit the ground running. And convocation gives us that rare chance to be together to celebrate what we accomplished last year and to look ahead with focus and purpose to the goals and our mission at Comprehensive Penrith. We also want to thank Mr. Wurz and Penridge Educational Association President Paul Wolberg for helping reset the tone by being our guest speakers that day. We all enjoyed a brunch before the staff headed to their schools for a week of professional development and classroom preparation. At convocation, we also shared the twenty-five, twenty-six district goals, which outline our dedication to preparing every student for success through future-ready college and career pathways that connect classroom learning to real-world experiences. We also expressed how we are equally committed to fostering a safe, supportive culture where students feel valued and empowering them with the skills and mindset to adapt, innovate, and lead. This is the foundation of our work, and it continues to guide us forward. This year, we are proud to continue advancing the priorities in our comprehensive plan as well. I'll go over three of them here. Expanding college and career pathways through new internships, job shadowing, and hands-on learning experiences. Deepening teaching and learning through critical thinking, digital literacy, authentic assessments, and opportunities to apply knowledge in meaningful ways. And strengthening school culture and safety by investing in student mental health, fostering a sense of belonging, and ensuring our schools remain secure, welcoming places to learn and grow. As we mentioned earlier, it was a beautiful morning for the first day of classes. All eleven of our schools officially welcomed back students and staff as they arrived with excitement for the start of another great year, another great year here at Penridge. Next up, Mr. Wurz. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, I'm going to go to the lectern. Mr. Wurz, if you could please join me at the lectern. We have a certificate from PSBA. You've been... You're now an honor roll member of PSBA for your five years of service with the school board, so. Thank you, Mr. Wurz. Next up, I'm going to ask Mr. Thomas to go over a few communication protocols in our school district, and I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson to review a couple items as well.
Thank you, Dr. Barrios. So this is on our website. This is also our official communication protocol when there are questions or concerns with the school district and how to get in touch with the right people for the right reasons. It all starts, as you can see, it is numerically listed there, and again, this is all a resource on the website as well, so people can... And we're watching on the stream as well as here in the audience can see. It all starts with your child's teacher. After that, it would be your guidance team. Then is, if that, if your issue cannot be resolved by one or both of those groups, that is when you would next move in to your school administration. If your school has an assistant principal, you would start with the assistant principal. If not, you'd go directly to the principal. After that, we have our administrative departments. The Business Office, Community Relations, Facilities, Human Resources, Student Services in Title IX, Teaching and Learning Department, Technology, and Transportation. If you still need resolution after going through those four categories, that is when you would contact our Office of Superintendent. If your question, as you see on the bottom of that graphic, if your question involves taxes, check first with your municipal tax collector. If your problem concerns school taxes cannot be resolved there, then you can also contact the Penridge School District Business Office, and the number is provided there. So we wanted to make sure that people knew that there was a process in place. There is a protocol for how to communicate and how to get answers in a more efficient way. Sometimes you might be contacting the wrong person, and that person may not have the time or availability to deal with your question, and that builds up frustrations because you don't think anyone's listening to you, and your question probably could have been answered by one of those first groups. So we wanted to give people a more efficient way of getting those answers. So, and questions or concerns, you can also contact us by looking at that document as well. Also tonight, we wanted to highlight just two things that we were able to do over the summer in the Communications Office. This was our first-ever publication called This is Penridge. What we did was we replaced the annual RANTR report, which was about three pages long. We cut costs, certificate costs for mailing and designing and publication, about twelve thousand dollars in total, by doing it ourselves digitally. So this was a nineteen-page celebration magazine, designed just like your college alumni magazine would be, and celebrates nineteen pages of student celebrations from all throughout last year, so we're really proud of that. And that went out to all of our stakeholders, as well as is now posted right with a link on top of our website on the main page. The other celebration, and this just came out over the last few days, also on top of our website. We also designed our own calendar again this year. We designed it ourselves. Last year, we did not. Saved some money by doing that in-house as well. But it is all up to date. It involves, has Penridge artwork right on the cover. Those are, that is one of, I believe, sixteen different pictures that will be hung into the district boardroom, celebrating student art coming up in the next few months, as we replaced the pictures that used to be there, so we made it the cover. Each month has every date from the academic calendar, as well as all the school board dates, and all the same information, as well as some federal holidays that are on there, and lots of space for people to fill in the blanks for their own planning and purposes, both as staff and as residents and parents of the district. So we're really proud of that. Again, principal, you can print it out at your leisure in color or black and white. The technology department would tell me, please do it in black and white and save more costs. Thank you. Next up, we would like to have Mr. Johnson come up and tell you about some exciting things going on in his office as well.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. The first event is transforming stigma. It is aligned to the program we had last September regarding mental health and building mental strength for life. This flyer, actually, I'm taking a look at for the first time. Thank you, Mr. Thomas, for constructing this with the school social workers. But again, this particular program is an emphasis for the school district. I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Barrios for their interest in building programs that align to the district goals such as culture. So this event will take place on September thirtieth at six PM. It should end in or around eight PM. And the change to the program from last year to this year, if you remember, we had a keynote speaker and then several other speakers from different community organizations that focused on resilience, building mental strength for life, mental illness, the stigma associated with mental illness. So we're going to do the same thing, but we added a couple of elements to the program, which everyone who participates will be able to see. We are providing professional learning time for our staff to earn credit for attending this event, which obviously means we consider it to be very important. We are also asking community members to attend, parents and guardians to attend. If you know people from other districts, we would like them to attend. The meeting will start in the auditorium at the high school. Another component will be here, so we'll start off in the auditorium, and then we'll have two groups that break out. The first group will be focused on iSmart, which is an online digital platform in looking at children, adolescents, and their digital footprint, as well as looking at online exploitation. The second component, which I'm excited about, Mr. Henry Hunt is aware as well. He's going to encourage coaches, student athletes to participate. But this is a program to talk about the stressors for student athletes and what they go through as competitive athletes. Some of you are parents, some of you have family members whose children participate in athletics, most aspire to play in college. So there's an element of pressure on those kids and on those student athletes. And we just want to talk to parents, community members, and the student athletes about making good choices and ensuring that they don't use things like PEDs, performance-enhancing drugs, to optimize their potential to go to the next level. So again, a very exciting program. Parents and participants who attend this will be able to see all three programs, and we're going to rotate. So an exciting event. I ask that you all attend. I'm hoping we have standing room only. Pretend like you're going to a rock concert. I asked Mr. Thomas to put up in front of you the district website. And if you look at the top right, you will see "Report Bullying." Hopefully you can see it. And if you click on that link, it brings you to a reporting form. That form goes to, as you can see, both to myself and to the building principal. I wanted to emphasize this tonight under the direction of Dr. Barrios because there are times when people think reporting an incident won't do anything. No one's going to respond. They're going to be ignored. However, I'm here to stand before you and the public and make crystal clear that if you report an incident or incidents, we will address it. And it won't only be addressed by just the building principal, but they will work in concert with people like myself, Dr. Palmer, the Assistant Superintendent, and any other stakeholder within the school district that needs to gain attention to that. Again, I want to make crystal clear that it will be addressed and it will be taken seriously. All forms of bullying, harassment, bias will not be tolerated by this administration and will not be tolerated by the board. Not one member of this board wants to see kids in fear for their safety. Not one member of this board wants to see kids intimidated. The board is here to support you and your children and family in a safe, supportive learning environment. What I would ask is that if you are a community member and you become aware of something, please notify us, even if you don't complete the form. If you reach out to me, you reach out to a building principal, I guarantee you it will be addressed swiftly and appropriately. And that doesn't always mean consequences. There are times when we can have restorative sessions with students, families. I've been involved in them. Dr. Barrios has been involved in them. Members of the cabinet have been involved in them. Our goal is always to ensure that kids feel safe, feel a sense of belonging, and it's not just a part of our district goals. One of those three goals Dr. Barrios put up on the screen. That is not lip service. If you have a concern and you bring it to our attention, you heard it here. This is recorded, right? Play it again. I promise you, we will address it, and a part of that is for record-keeping purposes and documentation is that form. It's a very simple form. It asks very little information, but relevant information about the incident that occurred, the date that it occurred, witnesses that may have observed it, and we will take action in terms of investigating the incident and providing the parent, guardian, or community member with a response, obviously while not violating FERPO. Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Johnson? That concludes our report. Thank you.
We have one more.
We did? No, that was it. You did one backwards.
The, um, safe to say.
Oh, safe to say.
I know I have one more. Safe to say, in the event that a parent, community member, anyone in the public feels uncomfortable reporting something. And there are times when people will feel uncomfortable. Sometimes people feel like they may be targeted, which will not happen. But in the, under those circumstances, there's a reporting mechanism within the state of Pennsylvania that allows you to report something anonymously. Now, when you report it anonymously, it goes to several people within the school district, and we can take action in a similar format as if you've completed the report form within the district website. That report form that I showed you is also connected to each school's webpage. So if you go onto any school's webpage within the district, all eleven schools, you'll see that same icon for "Report Bullying." So whatever mechanism a parent, guardian feels most comfortable, we would simply ask you to report. So that way we can act. And again, it's important to make those reports, whether it be anonymous or through our mechanism within the district, in a timely manner. So I would ask again that you report that not several months later, but as soon or as close to the event as possible because when we can investigate something in real time, it helps us and it helps the student, and it validates the event that occurred in terms of our response to support that student. Thank you, Dr. Barrios. Thank you, board, and thank you to the public.
Next up, I'd like to welcome Zoe Brown. She's our new student liaison. And thank you for coming to the meeting. The floor is here.
Thank you. I would like to say thank you as well for letting us have a student on the board and just share what we are doing in Penridge District, especially the high school in general. So with that, today was our first day of school, and all buildings were back in swing. At the high school, it was our second year of block scheduling, so hopefully we've worked out all the kinks in that. I personally know I appreciate it much. It gives us another class and gives us more opportunities to learn. We also implemented a new five-star system in the school. So now all students either sign in with a five-star app on their phone, or they use their student ID to get into the school. So that way, we have a record of who is here. I did have an early dismissal today, and I smoked out, so it is working well, and it allows everyone to know who is here. Um, looking backwards, Student Council started our year off at August twentieth. We held an overnight event in the school this year. We were very excited for that. Us officers wanted to create it so that Student Council could bond, and we were able to share our goals of the school year. We want to, our goal for the school year as Student Council officers was to create more of a school community and try to get everyone in the high school involved so that it's not separate as much, and so that really we are building that community. And we are hoping to increase attendance at all events this year with the lock-in. We ended that with a staff in-service breakfast on the morning of the twenty-first. We hosted that for all staff in the high school and it gave Student Council the chance to thank the teachers, as well as to meet and interact with some of them. I would like to give another thanks as well as all the teachers who are here at this high school and buildings across the district for allowing us students to come in today and learn not only to our ability, but to the best of our potential. A special thanks to Deborah Farms and Lena Supermarkets, who assisted us with food for this event and allowed us to serve the staff. Looking forward to the rest of the school year. We have Student Council hosting the Gallery of the Arts in Sellersville on Sunday, September first, which is a craft fair. And then, of course, our most anticipated event of the year, which is our homecoming game, which comes on Friday, October seventeenth. That's the same as our pick-up football game, which will be all money donated there to Grandview Breast Cancer Center. And then furthermore, we have our homecoming dance on October eighteenth, which is especially exciting because we have decided a theme that cannot be announced at the time. And then other upcoming events in the school, we have our class meetings for the junior, sophomore, and freshman classes in the upcoming week to get them introduced to the school and to address expectations for the upcoming school year and to welcome each class back in. We also have our club fair on the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth during Ram's time to allow students to see all the opportunities to get involved in here at the high school. Our Back to School Night is Wednesday, September third, from six to eight PM, and that's a time for all parents to come in, meet their students, teachers, and walk through their schedules for the first semester. We also have our college fair on September thirtieth in the White Gym for juniors and seniors to look at what colleges they could potentially want to attend one day and look forward to the future. Fall athletics are in full swing. Many of the sports teams have already had games. I myself am on the water polo team. I came from practice tonight, and we do have our first game tomorrow, so we're looking forward to that. Overall, we're just looking, us at the high school and the district across the board, are looking forward to the rest of the school year and everything ahead for our Penridge community. Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to public comment. According to Policy 903, "Public comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation is limited to three minutes and should be directed to the entire school board following the announcement of your name and municipality." Under this policy, the presiding officer has the authority to warn or stop a public commenter when evaluation of this policy occurs. First up is Brian McMillan.
Good evening. Pardon? Is that it? Okay. Good evening. Brian McMillan, East Rock Hill. I'm speaking tonight because I believe the Upper Bucks Tech School and Penridge School District deserve leadership that reflects transparency, fairness, and accountability from every director on the board. Our students, families, and taxpayers deserve nothing less. Unfortunately, there is a conflict of interest involving current board director Chris Kaufman. While he represents the Penridge School District both here and on the JOC Board at the Upper Bucks Tech School, he also holds employment with the Quakertown Community School District, which is one of the feeder districts for the tech school. This convoluted role by its very nature creates a perceived conflict of interest that compromises public trust. Even with the best of intentions, it's impossible to fully serve one district while holding financial or professional ties to another directly impacted by board decisions. The appearance of divided loyalties will inevitably cast doubt on every decision made, eroding the confidence that this community deserves to have in its administration and board directors alike. Conflict of interest rules exist to safeguard the integrity of this board. They ensure decisions are made for the right reasons, without bias, self-interest, or divided loyalties. When those rules are not honored, it's more than just a governance issue. It becomes a question of integrity, trust, and especially transparency, which is what this current board director ran on two years ago. As we all know, any member with a conflict of interest must recuse themselves from votes for the conflict exists. Since nearly every matter before the JOC involves both Penridge and Quakertown School Districts, it would leave Mr. Kaufman unable to participate effectively in the governing body of the JOC Board. The only realistic way to restore public trust is for Mr. Kaufman to step down from the JOC Board altogether. Both Quakertown, Penridge, and Palisades stakeholders deserve a representative who can serve wholeheartedly and without question or conflict. That's how we strengthen our integrity, that's how we protect our credibility, and that's how we move forward with our schools. As a gesture of good faith, I respectfully ask Mr. Kaufman to resign from the JOC Board. If he chooses not to, I ask this Penridge School Board to take the necessary steps to ensure that our community is represented with the impartiality it deserves by removing Mr. Kaufman from the JOC Board. Public trust is not optional, it's the foundation of governance, and right now that foundation is cracked until this conflict is resolved. Thank you.
Emily Guy. May I address this? I would like to address this because I know it was going to come up, so I prepared a statement. Last week at the Upper Bucks County Technical School JOC meeting, and now repeated here, there are calls for my resignation from the JOC because of my employment with Quakertown Community School District. Let me be clear, these arguments were promptly dismissed by the JOC solicitor in addition to having previously been discussed with our own solicitor prior to my employment, so they've been checked twice. To bring them up again at a board meeting 10 months after I was hired is nothing more than a performative pearl clutching and an attempt to mislead the public. It's a vulgar attempt to read or direct political attention away from the real work and success happening at Penridge. My concern with the recent JOC hire had nothing to do with the candidate, but with the process itself. JOC leadership and administration at UBCTS withheld critical information about a sitting member applying for and ultimately being hired for a position until 48 hours before the position's approval. From the time the position was posted in December of 2024 until the approval in June 2025, the committee was never notified that a sitting JOC member had applied. Over that time, the JOC had discussed and approved numerous items related to the school, its budget, and members of the administration. To ignore these facts and institutional nepotism does a disservice to the residents of all three Bucks County School Districts. The secretive and unchallenged process does lead up to a stage of fear that this has been a continuation of a quick pro quo hiring practice. To make matters worse, a member of the JOC leadership sat in on the interview without any notification to the entire JOC. UBCTS administration itself was concerned enough about the optics of this hire that they felt compelled to draft and read a statement defending only that position, despite another hire on the agenda at the June meeting. This position was brought to my attention by a fellow JOC member questioning if the candidate was in fact a member of our corps or just someone with the same name. These facts demonstrate by my focus on other members of the JOC was on the transparency and process, the integrity of the process and not the individuals. My position on the JOC has no bearing on the finances or financial decisions required to be made by Quakertown's own elected officials at their schools. At no time does my position on the JOC allow me to make decisions that would be financially beneficial. Any decisions made about finances of the school are voted on by each of the three sending schools and only pertain to the operation of UBCTS. To reiterate, Penridge and the JOC have no ability to make decisions that would be financially advantageous to my role at Quakertown. Additionally, the JOC operates with a superintendent of record who serves as liaison between the Upper Bucks superintendents. No way does the JOC have any employment powers over this individual, nor would JOC decisions adversely affect the position at their sending school. This was also publicly discussed with the JOC solicitor. Should a true or perceived conflict of interest arise, I will recuse myself. I stated this on Thursday. This suggests otherwise assembly and effort to muddy the waters. No action taken by the JOC financially advantages Quakertown over Penridge vice versa is applicable to Palisades. However, going forward, I also obtained from discussions regarding the swipe-in for superintendent of record position. I do this to alleviate concerns despite the swipe-in of being for the position rather than the individual assigned to the rotating two-year term. My commitment remains to Penridge, enriching opportunities for our students, maintaining safe and adequate facilities at both Penridge and UBCTS, and using my diverse professional experience to expand career-ready pathways for students who wish to pursue them. This is where my energy and commitment has always belonged, and that's what the public deserves.
Emily, sorry to call you, sorry.
Is the mic on? Emily Guy, East Rock Hill Township. The fact that today's school board meeting is on the first day of school, to the fact that the meeting start time was blundered, to Leah Foster Rash being listed as a JOC member before being actually voted on publicly for that role, to the third-party survey opt-out that was a giant mess, the blundering and incompetency of this board has become laughable. Deeper than that, it leads to gross mistrust as the optics of the situation make it look like you don't want parents to show up, and you don't want parents to speak up, and you don't care when we do. Also confirmed in your lack of responsiveness to email questions, I never get an actual answer to any of my questions that I email to you. Just one example, I never received a response to my questions regarding the usefulness of the paid surveys to Penridge students. No data, no evidence to its benefits to a single student here. You were elected to serve this community, all of it. Not just the dozen or so Democrat supporters who are quoted by every liberal news media outlet in the area, not just your friends and family, all of us. Mr. Kaufman, the blatant conflict of interest of you serving on the JOC for Penridge and being employed by Quakertown with your Q-Town boss on the JOC, serving two masters is not possible. You defend this conflict by saying the solicitor saw no conflict, but you balk at the optics of Jordan Blongren's hiring, also cleared by the solicitor. Your hypocrisy as well as your mendacity is astounding. You need to step down from the JOC, or the board needs to remove you. Also that Leah Foster Rash has been appointed to the JOC, let's not pretend it hasn't already happened. Both of you are PCA leadership, AKA Democrats, AKA liberal activists, both who refuse to answer direct questions asked by the public, then immediately change school policies in conflict with those issues that you refuse to speak about. That is called a lie by omission. You've gutted the advocacy policy, which allows staff to post any signs, flyers, or any sort of things they want to in our schools. Now we see the NEA sending out everyone is welcome kits, which includes sexual materials sponsored by Planned Parenthood. Do we have any guidelines about what grade classrooms they are allowed to be posted in? Don't worry, I don't expect an actual answer. Having two liberal activists on the JOC is not diverse representation. You need to select two different candidates. I want to reiterate that Leah Foster Rash is chair of the policy committee and reversed every conservative policy the prior board implemented. Sister of a liberal activist, husband of treasurer on the liberal organization suing the school district. Listen to Mr. Kaufman's own words, if you can't see the hypocrisy here, you're either dense or dishonest.
Look at the grand scope of this, the optics to it. Um, you know, if I was a candidate for this position, I wouldn't be losing my mind right now. We have somebody who is an elected official who sat in an interview process with our administration of the school and won there and was awarded a job. I mean, from the optics alone, that, I, that is a horrific place for us to be at. A terrible precedent to be setting for the district.
You touched on, thank you. Thank you.
And if I was a taxpayer in the future.
Tom Traeger.
Good evening, Tom Traeger, East Rock Hill. Two years ago, almost to the day, this very room was, this very room was filled with outrage. Like today, it was also the first day of school. And instead of celebrating, parents, students, and teachers stood here angry, blindsided, and betrayed. Why? Because a board majority made sweeping decisions without transparency, without input, without respect. They pushed through a curriculum change, the most critical foundation of education, without proper vetting, discussion, or community feedback. They claimed to champion parental rights and student choice, yet refused to give us either. They hired a consultant, not even certified in Pennsylvania, to rewrite what our teachers had built. They spent district money recklessly and ignored the voices of our professionals. The fallout was immediate. Teachers left, support staff left, my child's school went without, went months without permanent, without a permanent principal. My daughter's friends sat in classrooms with no permanent teachers. In the words of Maya Angelou, "People will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." And we remember how we felt, dismissed, voiceless, and deeply concerned for our children's future. But we did not stay silent, we showed up, we pushed back, and change happened. Over the last two years, we have seen a real shift, a hopeful one. Daily attendance is up, vacant positions have been filled, respect for teachers and staff is returning, disciplinary incidents are down, AP participation is growing. During the past school year, over 1,000 students took AP exams and three new courses were added. New student pathways are expanded from the STEM program to the Performing and Fine Arts Academy. This is progress, this is leadership that listens, and this is the district I want my children to grow up in. We cannot afford to go backward. The shift didn't happen by accident, it took board leadership willing to listen, administrators willing to roll up their sleeves, and a team committed to rebuilding trust and stability. The collaboration between this board and the administration has been explosive in the best way, delivering real results for students, families, and staff. This morning, I was able to send my children off to high school, middle school, and elementary school, not worrying about what curriculum they have or who will be their teachers, but rather grateful they actually have a curriculum to learn that they will enter in the classrooms filled with teachers and staff. We must continue to trust our teachers, empower our administrators, and welcome parent voice, not just when it's convenient, but always. And finally, I want to ask the board to approve the continued contract for Dr. Barrios. His steady leadership has helped guide us out of chaos and into real progress. Let's stay the course. Also, I want to thank Mr. Johnson for your presentation this evening on the reporting mechanisms and the fact that this has been supported by the board and put in place and made public. Thank you.
Carly Taylor.
Good evening, I'm Carly Taylor from Hilltown. Um, I'm here tonight after my daughter's first day of kindergarten at Grass Elementary, so thank you for seeing the value in this for our district and making this happen for our district. Um, sending her off on the bus today was a bittersweet moment of growth for my whole family. Um, orientation with Mrs. Johnson was wonderfully organized and executed. Um, my daughter loved getting to meet her new teacher, her classmates, and see what her school looked like. The information the team at Grass provided left us feeling prepared to send our daughter to kindergarten and be successful. I'm a new parent in the district navigating these processes for the first time, so I'm grateful for the effort that the staff and teachers put in at Grass. Um, I also appreciated Ms. Plor, Dr. Barrios, and Dr. Palmer, um, being in attendance. They made a point to say hi to all the kids individually, um, and I got to learn that Dr. Barrios is a fellow horseperson. So, um, I did want to share some feedback about some difficulty I've had accessing district-level communications. Um, I'm impressed on the presentations I've seen tonight already, so some of this, I think, is already in the works. Um, but for example, the "Find It Fast" button on the website only leads to empty pages. Um, in general, finding things on the district website takes a lot of clicks and a desire to really dig in for the information. Um, in some cases, links are not updated or lead to nowhere at all, so I find myself resorting to asking other parents for the information. I would ask that the district work with the parent advisory groups to ensure that there are real users testing the website and the registration processes and to avoid issues like what happened with the opt-out confusion. I really appreciated Mr. Words talking about data optimization and metrics. As a former lab, or clinical lab manager, that is something I think could really help us a lot in these types of situations. Um, I see you've all been making good improvements to modernizing the communication methods within the district. Um, and overall, my experience has been positive, so, um, I just wanted to share some feedback that may help increase transparency and trust within the community. Um, and finally, just a special shout-out to Mrs. Grover and all the PSD bus drivers who made my daughter Aria's dream of riding the bus to school a reality today. So, thank you.
Nathaniel Vever.
Good evening, Nathaniel Vever of Dublin Borough. In these uncertain times while we're fighting to protect our public education system from the near constant challenges thrown our way, we must take the time to praise the hard work of our teachers and staff, who are not only on the front lines of these battles, but are also winning victories for our children every day. Today, I'd like to highlight the incredible work of Penridge's cyber school teachers, who have worked tirelessly to bring our students home, where they'll not only get a significantly better education, but will do so while saving taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. Ms. Fair and team have brought back 16 students to Penridge, where they'll be part of our 97% completion rate and save $259,111.42 of taxpayer money this year. As those of you who were present at the committee meeting already know, if we include all students who have left cyber school, uh, excuse me, cyber charter schools for one reason or another, then the total savings to our district, as Mr. Words pointed out, is over $400,000. I want to thank Mrs. Fair and our Penridge cyber school team, as well as all Penridge teachers, for their hard work and commitment for making sure our students receive a quality education, for keeping Penridge money in Penridge, and for giving us all a reason to be Penridge proud. Lastly, I also have to mention that today was my daughter's first day as a Penridge student. As a graduate of Penridge myself, I can't emphasize enough uh, just how proud I am to have her in this district, where, like the tree outside of Pennridge Elementary says, "Everyone counts, cares, creates, and collaborates." Thank you.
Dan Bebernitz.
Good afternoon, Dan Bebernitz, Hilltown. Like the quote goes, "It takes a village to raise a child." Parents, teachers, community leaders, safety responders, neighbors, the list goes on. In order for this invested team to work effectively, it requires ample communication. I value, and there is plenty of evidence supporting, the benefits of the paid survey gives to parents, teaching administrators, and community leaders for the past two decades. Obviously, the most important and most central to a child's well-being are the parents and caregivers. Parental inclusion is crucial when addressing student issues. Parental rights are ensured by a sample. issues. Parental rights are ensured by sample, uh, sample surveys provided, opt-out options, and public access to records. While parents have always had the right to refuse, I believe that having your child participate in this anonymous survey is a great benefit to our community. And if you haven't, I encourage you to take a look at the presentation on the district website. If you'd like a realistic view of what issues matter most to the children in our community, you can find it laid out in a tangible and easy-to-access format. The data gathered lets our community know what issues our children are facing, and what issues they may be too afraid to reach out about, and this gives a chance of helping children. I think we can all agree that the rollout of this opt-out email could have gone better. It was poorly worded, and the following emails left many more confused than the first. I believe that the opt-out and details regarding PAYS survey should be easy and accessible because that's a right of a parent. I'd like to see that small hiccup remedied moving forward. What good is the PAYS survey, I heard asked previously. In 2010, when the survey identified that a high percentage of our teenagers were abusing drugs that they took from their parents' medicine cabinets, the police took that data and information they gathered from the PAYS survey and rolled, uh, rolled out the drug take-back boxes you still see today, removing unused prescription drugs from our community by the pounds. Learning about that issue required us asking students in-depth questions, like where they were obtaining drugs. You're right, there are some sensitive questions in the survey, questions about sex, drugs, alcohol, violence, suicide, because those are the areas of concern that we want to help our teenagers with. By avoiding these questions, all you do is avoid the answers, because the concerns don't stop existing simply because we are uninformed. Opponents of this survey aren't trying to solve problems, they're trying to hide from problems so they don't have to be solved. If there's a child, uh, if there's an issue that could damage the trajectory of our children, I want to help. That is it for the PAYS survey. I also wanted to give another thank you to this board, to, uh, Mr. Johnson, Dr. Barrios, and everyone involved in the, the new rolling out of the, um, the reporting, uh, system. I look forward to the results of that. Thank you.
Laura Foster.
Hey, uh, Laura Foster, East Rock Hill. Um, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for sharing what you, um, talked about earlier about some of the efforts that the school is doing around reporting. Um, you know, it's, I'm not really sure how much different it is from what was in place before. Um, you know, forms and how to report are important. Um, mental health services are important as well, doing workshops geared towards parents are important. Um, you know, strength of a stigma as a theme, kind of focusing on one population of athletes is important. It doesn't change what is going on in the culture at our school. So, doing mental health service programs to parents doesn't translate to there being good mental health supports to students. You know, having a form to report thing doesn't change the culture in our school, where there is repeatedly instances of children hearing the N-word in the hallways and discrimination against queer children. When you're talking about different populations of students and who to gear mental health services to, student athletes isn't like, even like the top 10. Like, the top ones, again, are the queer students, the black and brown students, and female students. So, I'm going to ask, like, what is it that you're actually doing to help change the culture at this school to support the students? It's the culture. It's about being unaffirmed, it's about being bullied and there being discrimination against you based on the color of your skin and who you love or how you dress. You know, that report that we did as parents and came back that there was like 20% of students, um, struggle with the climate, what are you doing about that? You know, any place that I've worked at, when we're doing metrics and we're kind of coming back with data, we're not just being like, "This is great, this is great, this is great." We're looking at where can we improve and how can we improve it? Like, we're, can manage and talk about things like racism, and homophobia, and transphobia. These are all important things. To kind of skirt around that issue is a disservice to these students who are once again being ignored. This goes along with like the recording of the AP scores. Again, I'm saying this is great, I'm, these are good scores. A long time ago, you all had the survey from Children First about discrepancies in AP scores amongst African-American and white students. Never one sits at that address publicly. You all have the data on the discrepancies between the higher rates of discipline against African-American students than the rest of the population. How many of our white students have been issued summary citations, and how many black ones have? Who's going to start addressing these issues? None of this addresses the real issues. I'm going to encourage you, once again, to start to look at the climate at Penridge and do something to address those issues. Thank you.
Kimberly Dillian.
Kimberly Dillian, Kirksey Borough. I just wanted to quickly respond to Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Kaufman, your conflict of interest came up months after your hire, because to the best of my knowledge, you never told anybody you were hired. Um, your comments were cut off when they were brought up by Mrs. Guy. They ended with, and I quote, "As a taxpayer, I would be losing my mind right now," unquote. You set the bar for a fellow board member at perceived conflict of interest. Do you not see the hypocrisy of sitting here and trying to explain away your own true conflict of interest? On another note, as noted in Penridge School Board Policy 5 and codified in Pennsylvania law pertaining to operation of the tech school by a joint committee, quote, "Each participating school board, uh, school board of directors shall elect one or more of its members, as the case may be, to serve on the area career and technical committee," end quote. Joint Operating Committee C policy four states, quote, "Each participating school district shall elect from among its board members a designated number of representatives to serve on the joint operating committee in accordance with the law and articles of agreement. If a vacancy occurs due to death, resignation, or removal, the vacancy should be filled in accordance with the school code, Sunshine Law, an applicable law for the unexpired term by the board of the school district represented," end quote. Jordan Blongrim resigned from the JOC after accepting a job at the tech school. Subsequently, and without a board vote, Leah Rash was appointed to the JOC with her name and email address being placed on the JOC webpage. After Mr. Wirth acknowledged his improper appointment, which violated not only board policy, but also state law, including the Sun, Sunshine Act, he removed Mrs. Rash's name from the JOC webpage and added an agenda item for tonight, calling for a vote for her, for her on the JOC. However, given that prior to Mrs. Rash's improper appointment to the JOC, Mr. Wirth clearly participated in backroom conversations with Mrs. Rash and other board members. Therefore, backroom conversations, uh, therefore placing Mrs. Rash up for a vote now will simply be seen as performative and does not undo discussions that went on behind the scenes. The only good faith path forward would be to remove Mrs. Rash from contention and nominate other board members. Mrs. Batiski formerly operated as the board vice president, so she clearly has the skills and the temperament to represent the district well in this capacity. On the other hand, Mrs. Sharino, sorry if I had that wrong, currently serves as an alternate JOC member, and she attends most JOC meetings. As such, she would be able to hit the ground running on the JOC. Mr. Wirth, I do not believe your appointment of Mrs. Rash was done with ill intent. However, if you do not pull Mrs. Rash from the running, you are knowingly dipping your cup into a poisoned well. Thank you.
Moving up, Dan King-Kiner, West Rock Hill.
Thank you. Uh, Dan King-Kiner, West Rock Hill. Uh, I'm a father of an autistic child who attended, who attended West Rock Hill Elementary. At this point, I'm sure we're all aware of what happened, what is happening at West Rock Hill Elementary. I sent several emails to Dr. Barrios, Mr. Johnson, and Dr. Palmer a few months ago, requesting the policy and procedure for when a teacher or staff member reported for misconduct towards children or other staff members. As of today, I've still not received what the protocol is. There's somebody else on this board that would be happy to share this information with me. Our children deserve to be protected and not silenced, especially non-verbal children. Thank you.
Uh, last one is Kapri Pott.
Hi, it is nice to meet you all. Um, I do not have a lovely prepared statement. I did not see myself being here tonight, and I don't like speaking in public, so I will do my best. Um, we received notification a week before school started about the changes in busing, um, including that our two neighborhood staffs are removed and our young children will be out on Fifth Street, a whole large group of them to catch the bus. Um, apparently one make was on enough notice for the Transportation Department to respond to us before last night. Um, so I am here as a spur of the moment kind of thing. Um, it is not safe for a group of young children to be catching a bus on Fifth Street at that time of day. Um, I have two younger, I have a seven-year-old as my oldest, I have two younger children. I am there trying to keep three young children safe as cars go whizzing by. I do not think that is appropriate. Um, there are things like the NHTSA who have put out statements of regulations, recommendations that this is in violation of. Uh, we had a perfectly safe stop. I understand there's an issue, but I'd like to know more what it is. Why are there not enough bus drivers? Why are there not enough bus drivers? Um, last year there was a lot of trouble on the bus. Um, Mr. Smith told me on a number of occasions, "I'm sorry, the bus drivers are having a hard time keeping all the children controlled." And now we have even more kids on the bus. Um, this morning, there was a greater surprise when, as we were waiting there at the corner of our street and Fifth Street, when the bus stopped across the street and off across the street over there, without really even blocking any cars from turning down our street if a car were to come and want to do that. It, that was proven something that nice to know ahead of time. Um, so yeah, I would just like to know what's being done. If there's a shortage of bus drivers, are we addressing that? Are we still trying to hire them? I don't think kids that age should be catching a bus on a sidewalk with no grass cushion even. That is against recommendations. It feels like this is a backward step in the safety developments I would hope to be seeing a school district make, um, to keep our kids safe as they catch the bus. Um, I had multiple emails, and I'm here, I'm here as a representative of my community, for our Hill and Del community. Nobody else could come tonight with this short of notice. Um, but you can reference many emails that we've all sent to the Transportation Department. Not one of us heard anything until last night. Um, I guess that's all I'm going to say, other than I can check, I said much better in writing. I sent several articles that I very easily found from organizations who know a whole lot better than me about what's safe, and there were many steps backwards that these changes have made as far as safety. Um, I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Pott, I did receive your email today. I knew you just copied us on it. We'll make sure we can back you on that. All right, moving along. Uh, the next thing up is the consent calendar. I'd like to make a motion to pass items A through Q, unless someone wants to, uh, take one out. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, my, Mr. Gump.
Mr. President, I am requesting that line 117 on the personnel agenda be removed while we are gathering more information.
It's line 117, which is, uh, she's asking not to take action on that particular individual, but just move forward with everything else. It's on the personnel report.
Personnel, okay. Okay, so we'll exclude that. So, I'd like to make a motion for items A through Q excluding...
Line 117 on the personnel report. Everything else is fine to be voted on.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero. Next up is committee reports to this curriculum. Senator Merkel.
Thank you very much. This month's curriculum meeting, we received updates on Everest Promote, Penridge's Superior Cyber Program, which provides the flexibility of a rigorous cyber education with benefits of schooling in one's home community, including access to school activities and hybrid opportunities. We have received updates on implementation of this year's school day kindergarten pilot, potential scholarship opportunities for students looking to take dual enrollment, enrollment programs, and shifts to the middle school health and wellness programs to reduce redundancy and streamline curricular implementation. We have two items before us tonight. First is a curriculum improvement proposal for those health streamlines, and the other is obsolete books. So, at this point, uh, I would ask for a motion to approve changes to wellness and physical education curriculum for grades six through eight.
Second. Who's that? Was that Jordan? Or, raise a chain. Raise a chain, second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero.
The second motion is to approve the following obsolete books, A through E.
Second.
Second, Ms. Sharino. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero. Moving on to facilities.
Our next curriculum committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 8th of 2020. Thank you very much.
I apologize.
You're all good.
Moving on to the next report from Mr. Kaufman on facilities.
The facilities committee met on August 18th. Um, up for board approval is the approval of obsolete items, uh, A through E.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rash. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero.
I'm sorry. I was assuming we were jumping across those.
I'm sorry.
Next facilities committee meeting scheduled for Monday, September 15th.
All right, moving along to finance. Uh, finance committee met August 18th. Have a bunch of things to go over tonight. First is approval of contracts. I'd like to make a motion to approve items A through P.
Motion?
Aye. Second by Mrs. Rash. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the approval of the AS3 program. Motion to approve the Bucks County intermediate unit to provide educational services for the AS3 program at West Rock Hill Elementary School during the 2025 school year. The tuition cost based on seven students is $692,000 with an additional estimated cost of $90,000 for related services based on student need. I'd like to make a motion to approve item C. Any, maybe a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Sharino. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero. Moving on to approval of bids. We have two on that, uh, uh, tonight. Items A and B. I'd like to make a motion to approve , uh, items A and B.
Second.
A second.
I second.
Sorry. Sorry. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero. Next item is approval of student activity accounts. These are the accounts that, for the clubs and they usually These are the accounts that, for the clubs, and they usually carry over from year to year in case there's new ones. Tonight, we will be approving items A. I'd like to make a motion to approve items A through J.
Second.
Second, Ms. Serena. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine to zero. The next finance meeting, committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 15th, 2025. Moving on to personnel.
Thank you. Good evening. There was no personnel committee meeting in August, but we do have several agenda items. The first one is the approval of superintendent resignation, which is, as a matter of course, Dr. Barrios must resign and then be rehired under the new contract, which is the next agenda item. But now I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Dr. Angelo Barrios effective immediately.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine to zero.
But now the good part. So Dr. Angelo Barrios came to us as Mr. Angelo Barrios and is now Dr. Angelo Barrios, our favorite superintendent, so I'm pleased to make a motion to approve an employment contract with Dr. Angelo Barrios as superintendent, effective August 25th, 2025, and ending August 31st, 2030.
Second. Second by Mr. Corbin. We have a question or comments?
Make a comment. I am, out of all my tenure, my terms are messed up in November, and out of all my tenure, I think one of my most proud votes would be the hiring of Dr. Barrios. I just can't say enough about working with him and the team, and just the open communication, and just, you know, the way he communicates with all of us, with even our own dysfunction of all coming together. He's done a wonderful job, and you can just tell he's just so invested with the kids, going out to all the schools, you know, after school events, having great ideas, trying to, you know, bring some more things in, you know, even with some cost savings here and there. So I just can't say enough that I'm very happy that we are renewing this contract and that he is going to be here for a while. After the vote.
I also would like to second, basically what Jordan said. It probably is, I think, the best accomplishment in my almost four years. When we started that process, I can't remember how many people interviewed, it was a lot, and from the very gate, I was sincerely hoping they would end up being Mr. Barrios, Dr. Barrios. It has, there's been nothing disappointing about it, and I think you've built a great team and worked so well with the board and the community. I just think it's one of the best things that's happened at Penridge in a while. I'm very happy that you'll be here for five more years.
I cannot say enough kind of things about Mr. Barrios, but he really seems to be sweating a lot of important, so I don't know.
I just wanted to add that we've been working on it for a while. I was in the board when we hired our superintendent. Admittedly, we took somewhat of a risk because he was, had no prior superintendent experience, but that was quickly forgotten after he started, and it's amazing the leadership he brings to both the school, the community, his ability to pick the right people and get them involved, and never afraid of a challenge, and probably make their head get bigger and bigger. If I had a business outside here, I would like him to run it too. He takes into account everything, and I'm very happy that he'll be here for five more years and look forward to becoming employed again.
I'll just add that that process was very intense, and there were quite a few nights where the board was deliberating and working till midnight, and I knew you were the one. So I'm really also pleased that you're here for five years, so congratulations.
So I just want to keep dragging out this unputting process. In the time that we've worked with Dr. Barrios, I think one of the biggest things that has stood out to me is just his vision for the district, and, you know, whatever's hit, gets thrown at him, he handles it with a cool head, takes everything in stride, and, you know, he's first to admit fault, but even when it's not, you know, on him, I'm just, I'm very proud that we have a superintendent such as Angelo for the next five years. I think we're not, you're not going to find a better superintendent in Bucks County, so.
I would second everything that everybody has said. Indication has been such, it's been amazing working with Angelo as a school board member, but not just that, but I hear staff members, I hear administration, I hear parents just say how wonderful he is. He is just such a down-to-earth person. He's accountable, he's honest, he's hardworking, he's definitely someone that I want to see as our superintendent for five years plus, so thank you. Thank you for choosing Penridge.
I look forward to working with you two. I'm going to keep it very short. Congratulations, Officer.
All right, there's no more, no more comments? We don't need to do a roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine to zero. Congratulations and welcome.
Mr. Wears, may I just make a couple remarks, please? I want to thank the board of school directors for their confidence in me and for extending my contract for the next five years. Serving as superintendent at Penridge is both an honor and a responsibility that I take very seriously. Over the past couple of years, we've made important strides in strengthening teaching and learning, expanding opportunities for our students, and building a stronger sense of community. None of this happens without the commitment of our board, our teachers, administrators, support staff, families, and most importantly, our students. Looking ahead, our focus remains clear, continuing to advance the priorities outlined in our plan, preparing every student for their future, and ensuring Penridge remains a district our community is proud of. Again, I'm grateful for the trust placed in me, and I look forward to continuing this important work together. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of memorandum of understanding. So Mr. Wears mentioned this item in his president's report, and this is also thanks to the innovation of Dr. Barrios. This is the student co-op program that will provide Penridge Tech School students with an opportunity to gain hands-on experience, working within various departments here at Penridge School District. So I believe it's six students will have the opportunity for a co-op that will be paid, and that will start in September, and they will be able to work two days a week. And so this memorandum addresses that, as well as the employee mentors will receive $1.50 extra an hour if they are mentoring one of these students. So I'll make a motion to approve the Upper Bucks Technical School Cooperative Educational Program, MOU, between the Penridge School District and the Penridge Educational Support Professionals Association.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine to zero.
Okay, the next item is approval of resolution. So motion to approve resolution and charges regarding employee number 2287.
Second.
Second by Ms. Chakin. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine to zero.
Next, we have 12 tenure recommendations. I'll make a motion to approve tenure recommendations for the following employees: Robert Pizico, Tyler Bigum, Gillian Feder, Mason Gilbert, Alyssa Granite, Stephanie Ayatrola, Cheryl Kiefer, Lindsay McNair, Haley Lees, Olivia Ruth, Madison Bender, and Catherine Litzenberger.
Second. Second by Mr. Merkel. Questions or comments? I just wanted to add that I thank all these individuals for their commitment to Penridge, and I'm glad that they could obtain tenure and look forward to them spending many more years here, so I appreciate their support. Other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine to zero. I'm guessing none of them were here tonight, so.
Next, we have approval of the revised organizational chart, which is a very handy tool to reference, so I'll make a motion to approve revised organizational chart.
Second.
Second by Ms. Serena. All, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine to zero.
And finally, the next personnel committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 15th.
Moving on to policy. Ms. Rash?
We had a policy meeting on August 13th. First up on the agenda is motion to approve first reading on following policies A through F listed below.
Second.
Second by Ms. Chakin. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next up, we have a motion to approve policy 806 child abuse.
Second.
Second, Ms. Chakin. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine to zero.
That is it. The next policy committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 8th.
Moving on to student services. Ms. Serena?
Thank you. Our last student service meeting was August 13th. Up is the approval of an overnight trip. Motion to approve overnight trip fest from Arc City JV Cheerleaders to attend Pine Bar's Cheer Camp retroactive to August 13th, 2025.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rash. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine to zero.
That is it for student services. Our next committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 8th.
Moving on to the IU. There was recently an August 19th meeting, I was unable to attend. One of the areas that they're focusing now, that they got their funding straightened out, is an expansion of buildings, and they're adding some facilities because their population, student population is growing so rapidly. They expect to have more openings up in our area, and trying to find space there as well as other parts of the county. Otherwise, that's all I have for tonight. The next IU board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 16th. Moving on to the Upper Bucks County Technical School. Mr. Corbin.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Going to make this fairly quick. We had a grant this year for $152,514. Thank you for school year '25-'26. It's a Perkins account. It's for equipment, and it's a 50-50 account, and these funds will pay a percentage, not only of salaries for our instructional facilities, but also for the equip. A little update for what activities happened this summer. Forty-seven summer co-op students were working, and they're looking to increase that next year by at least a third. Twenty-five-'26 enrollment highlights. Student placed and counting, 56 for Palisades, 148 for Quakertown, 112, excuse me, 148 for Penridge, 112 for Quakertown, 21 from other schools. We have 50 students on the waiting list, total enrollment to date is 967 students, and we have 100% of the paperwork has received on all those students. That's some great organizational activity, coordinating all three school districts with the tech school. All groups need to be congratulated on that. Notable highlights for '24-'25. 2,447 industry certifications were earned by the students during that same year. Thirty-four additional certifications were earned by seniors who participated in the Bucks County Community College ISY program. Forty-three percent of the seniors participated in the co-op program, and 15 participated in the clinical placement and internships. These people are highly motivated. Other notable highlights. Enrollment for '24-'25, '25-'26 years has increased. We strengthened the relationship of our district partners. We've reimagined enrollment process, and we're working through the Office of Civil Rights, National Best Practice, five-year Early Bird Collective Bargaining Unit. We have all three bargaining units at the VOT Tech School have approved their contracts early, which is a great start. And 27 yes votes unanimously for the passion of the '25-'26 school budget. Just a couple more. School year, the impact, total earnings by students, $1,856,385. Number of students involved in program gained real-world experience was 277. 201 employers partially participated in the program. 125,781 hours were put together by the students. These kids love to work. Just now for '25-'26, parent information item is scheduled for September 25th. Career Technical Education Expo is scheduled for October 9th. The full OAC meeting, we review the facilities and equipment on October 23rd. Open house will be held November 13th, and spring OAC meeting focused on curriculum will be held on March 11th, 2026. And, that is my report. Thank you. Now, we do have an issue here, the approval of a JFC member. I'll make the motion, I just want to indicate that I was not involved with the selection of this individual. I was never communicated, and I was never given the opportunity to say yea or nay of my thoughts on it, but I'm going to go through it. We have a motion to appoint Leah Rash as a JFC member, replacing Jordan Wongrom for the remainder of her current term, ending in 2026. Do we have a second?
Second.
Comments?
I do, I do. I'm kind of in line with Kim Gillian's comment, and Ron, I also don't think it was malicious, I think it was just an oversight about the fact that it was put on the agenda, but I'm wondering why we aren't doing, and I appreciate Leah you willing to step into it, because it's just another time commitment, and all of us have limited time, but why weren't we, why didn't we do nominations? It would make sense to me that the alternate would step into that, just because Carolyn has the background and some consistency, particularly since Bob's stepping down, so, you know, Chris would be the only one with any history, so I guess I'm wondering why it wasn't more discussion, or maybe Carolyn just had no interest in doing it, I'm not sure.
Let me just set the record straight, because I know people love to make things up and imagine what could have happened. I did communicate with the entire board, letting them know that Jordan was stepping down. I asked for volunteers, and I got one, so I then sent the message off, knowing that we had to have it on the agenda anyway, but I let the tech school know who we were picking. They decided to publish it. That was a mistake. There's no behind back ring dealings or anything like that. I had one volunteer, I'm going to pick him, you know? It will come to a vote. If someone else wants to run, they should have let me know. We would have had a discussion about it, but let's just move on, okay?
I would like to add, yes, I am the alternate, but just with time restraints, I just wasn't able to fill on the spot. I mean, it's different when you're an alternate, I don't have to attend the committee meetings, and I do make every effort to attend the actual meetings, which not many do. I think it's just me and someone from Palisades, so I did not take it, just because of time constraints, I just wouldn't be able to do that.
Well, that makes sense, and thank you Leah for stepping up, and Ron for clearing it up, because I did not assume, I know that was... because I did not assume, I know that was going around a little bit, that it was any backroom deal. I don't know who would like to have another committee, obviously.
I was looking for people. I got one volunteer. We could not fill it for just the remainder of the term. I was originally asked if anyone wanted it for the rest of the term, but I was told that that's not allowed. You have to fill it the whole term, so.
Okay, I was just going to add that I did volunteer, but it was for the remainder of the term.
For the remainder, but that was not, I, when I wrote that, that was incorrect. That was not allowed.
So Christine, you did volunteer, the remainder of the term?
But you can't do it.
But, yeah, after that, I found out that it's not allowed. According to, like, you have to fill it for the whole term. You can't just fill it for.
So, sorry. So what you're saying is that the vote tonight will be for the remainder of this and then also three more years?
Yeah, for the remainder.
Of your term.
Of your term.
Right, so then why couldn't Christine, that's what Christine was going to volunteer for.
What's your?
So my term will be up in November, so if, so since Christine volunteered for the remainder of the term, that would mean there'd be two people that were interested.
Your term, when you were nominated in December, it was for three years.
Oh, right, right. So you're saying this appointment, okay, I'm sorry, I'm tracking, I'm tracking. Yes, sorry.
It gets a little squirrely when you start counting them, like, leaving the board, and it's still a three-year term. It kind of throws everything to.
Yeah, it's kind of like, you know, reflections. I want to make sure it's kind of continued, so the person that throws your term will replace when your term would have expired, not. Otherwise, two people are changing at the same time. You don't want to do that.
My, when initially it came out that it was going to be Leah. At first, my alarm went off. I called Ron because I was like, what? I was like, because I was confused why Karen wasn't, I just assumed she was going to want to take the role. And again, like Leah, no disrespect, but I just didn't, like, you never were adding in the JOC meetings, so originally I was like, that, like, why, like, why the interest? But if that is something, you're the only one, this is something that you want to get involved in, it definitely is a lot of extra time. And it's just an awesome, it's a completely different feel than, you know, the sending school district, the school board. But that was my only, I guess, question as to, I guess, your interest just because of not, you know, knowing that before.
Right.
Yeah, when we first were elected too, it was one of the things that I said I was interested in from the beginning. But, you know, there's only so many people you can have doing things and running committees. But I've always been interested in it, and I'm pretty confident on it.
Mr. President, I think it's notable to point out that in Board Policy zero zero five, section, I believe, eight, it says that the president shall recommend for approval from a majority of board members voting members to serve on the JOC. So that's the process. That you guys are following tonight, you're making a recommendation of the person who volunteered. They have to fill the remainder of the spot, the three-year term, and that's consistent with Board Policy, and I thought that might be something that should be spread on the record.
Thank you very much. Ron, before you say anything, just real quick, I just, if I don't say it, I'm going to punch myself. I get very concerned that I never heard a word from you about this appointment. You never called my office. You never sent me an email. You never gave me the opportunity to at least ask a few questions. That's all I'm saying right now, and I think that's highly inappropriate for someone that's stated himself across the board that you're going to be open to everybody. But for some reason, I feel you just closed it off, and it just was not appropriate. That's all I'm saying.
Does the JOC president approve JOC members? Thank you.
Anyway, I'm pretty sure we follow policy on that one, so we'll move on.
I'm sorry. Sunday eight three at six forty-six AM to the entire board. It was communicated that we were asking for volunteers, so I went to the entire board.
I did go to the entire board? I thought so. I was going to check that when I got out. We have a motion.
Even if it went to the board, picking up a phone and making a conversation, that's called transparency? You didn't do it, period.
Any other questions? Ron, we take.
I just have one more comment. I'll be brief. It's understanding nobody volunteered except Leah. Leah, thank you for stepping up, and I want to congratulate Jordan on her job at the Tech School, the Tech School and Penridge and Policy, to break it down, all very lucky to have her. So, sorry that you're stepping down, but I'm glad for the reason. And Leah, thanks for volunteering to take on something else.
Thank you.
We do have a second? All those in favor? Do a roll call? All right, we'll do a roll call.
Ms. Petchinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Longrum?
Yes.
Mrs. Chiken?
Yes.
Mr. Cormac?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Merkelgum?
Yes.
Mrs. Rash?
Yes.
Mrs. Shirena?
Yes.
And Mr. Work.
Yes.
Okay. Our next, I'm sorry. Our next scheduled meeting with the UBCTS is September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and we'll have some comments later. Thank you.
Moving on to the Penridge Area Coordinating Committee. Ms. Rash?
I just closed it. Okay, so the Penridge Area Coordinating Committee met on June twenty-sixth. There were representatives from Bedminster, Silverdale, East Rock Hill, Penrich School District, and then the Senior Center. The most notable part of the meeting is we had someone from the Perkium and Watershed Conservancy. I can't say that right. Conservancy, Conservacy. Anyway, the Perkium and Watershed people were there. And they gave a really interesting presentation on impermeable surfaces, the water issues that impact the entire Perkium River, and, you know, we've seen more flooding and perpacy in recent years. What it means when there's redevelopment coming up and making sure we have places for the water to go. If you have time, I highly recommend checking out their website. There are things you can do in your own home, like a rain catchment system, things like that. But where they are right now, they've done a lot of research, and now it's the place where they need pretty much everyone that follows the whole river to start working together. And they need funding. So check out their website, you know, if you are, if this is something you're passionate about, reach out to your legislators about supporting the funding to make sure some of these aspects for safe drinking water and ensuring that there's less flooding happen. Bedminster was approved to advertise for a new patrolman. Silverdale Mayor Claire stepped down, and the new mayor, Jay Brown, has been appointed. There's a community day in Silverdale on September thirtieth, and if you've been in Silverdale, you'll see all the new townhouses are starting to be built. East Rock Hill was also talking about a project with DCNR around like a mix-in state park for stormwater, and they're working with the Perpacy Regional Authority well development also. So safe water, where our water goes, is something we should all be concerned about. The Senior Center has a lot of fun things going on. If you're a senior, you should check it out. And as always, the call for more volunteer firefighters, ENS, we're desperate need of own, and if we have to start consolidating fire departments, it will raise everyone's homeowner's insurance because if you're not within a certain distance, your homeowner's insurance goes up. And these are people who work very hard to keep our community safe. That was it. The next meeting will be on September twenty-fifth.
Moving on to old business, any old business. New business. Any new business. All right, we had a few who signed up for a public comment. First one on the list is Emily Guyve.
Emily Guyve, East Rock Hill Town. Emily Guyve, East Rock Hill Township. I want to comment on board members talking amongst themselves during public comments. This lack of attention to speakers is not only disrespectful, it is directly opposed to your job as an elected official to pay attention to what your constituents have to say. Specifically, Mrs. Foster Rash and Mr. Kaufman talking amongst themselves during Mr. McMullin's first comment of this evening. You owe him and all of us an apology. I also want to comment regarding the Safe to Say system. Students were actually threatened that false reports would face prosecution. That doesn't make students feel safe to say anything. Please reiterate to students that there will be no retaliation for speaking out as long as they speak the truth. Pay survey results have never been used by our district. The prior board admitted that. The current one pretends it has benefits, but has provided zero evidence of that. Still waiting. It takes a village, another speaker said. I don't want a village to raise my children. I want to raise them with my own values and beliefs. Schools are to teach educational materials, not political activism. The only reason my daughter is still in Penridge is because of the Tech School, and the fact that two liberal activists have been appointed to sit on the JOC terrifies me. I fear the changes they want to implement. Will the girls' bathrooms and locker rooms be open to mixed use there? The remaining bathrooms Penridge girls still feel comfortable using? Mr. Kaufman claiming pearl clutching is another example of his hypocrisy. We just saw Mrs. Foster Rash appointed to the JOC because no other volunteer was able to serve the complete term, yet correct procedure wasn't followed. Opix. But still, okay for the right people. Mrs. Longrum was the only qualified candidate, well-known by the people that interviewed her, and that is also okay. These progressive activists that get up and speak with this false authority while name-calling and attacking others only promote division. They claim racism, homophobia, and yet have no actual proof of these things being tangible issues here. Most students don't care about sexual orientation or race. Bullying surveys have actually refuted these claims. The two largest bullying reasons in the most recent survey were, I'm not sure, and physical appearance, weight, clothing, hairstyle, with sexual orientation and race being minimally reported. If there are actual reports made to the administration, I hope those individual incidents are being handled swiftly and seriously by the administration. When mental health is an issue, students need to be taught resilience to overcome their issues, not just be coddled. When we create special categories and celebrate only those special categories, we are doing a disservice to the rest, dare I say, the majority of our students. And they push the disrespect, the wishes of the parents, because these progressives think they know better. In the scariest way possible, they think they know what's best, and then empowers them to push for their own beliefs no matter the actual choices or beliefs of the parents and community, no matter the mechanism of their activism. The use of the word fears rampant, the emotional manipulation, yet there's no actual evidence or actual respect for true diversity. They don't respect Christian or conservative beliefs.
Thank you. All right, in favor, Mr. R. You up again? Okay, let's go. Kim Bedilian, second comment.
Kim Bedilian, Perpacy Borough. A post on Facebook by a Penridge advocacy group grabbed my attention. The post encourages Penridge teachers and parents to order "and everyone is welcome here" back-to-school kit. The kits are being funded by the Teachers Union and Planned Parenthood, among other groups. The Teachers Union's website recommends that teachers place their classrooms, place in their classrooms and wear on their person messaging that includes the phrase "everyone is welcome here", surrounded by a list of ideologies and identity groups such as "teach inclusive sex ed", "protect trans kids", "read banned books", "fight racism", "disability pride", and "learn from the planet". As we have learned over the past five years, what may appear as benign language means something entirely different when put into practice. Teach inclusive sex ed turns into "don't teach just reproductive science, you must also teach sexuality, including how to please oneself and others, and the sex practices of sexual minorities, including kink." Protect trans kids becomes "let kids who suffer from gender confusion operate in school based upon their perceived gender identity. That includes name and pronoun changes kept secret from parents, and boys and girls' private spaces in sports." Read banned books means read sexually explicit material. I'm aware of at least one book this very school board agreed to remove from circulation due to its graphic sexual content. So why on earth would we want a teacher to promote reading that banned book? Fight racism means push to keep the divisive diversity, equity, and inclusion agenda that pits students against each other based on the color of their skin. Disability pride means pick a disability, claim to suffer from it, and use it for sympathy, special treatment, and as a cudgel on others. Learn from the planet means embrace climate hysteria. Everyone is welcome here means accept our worldview and you will be, or you will be labeled and canceled. If a Penridge teacher does not feel comfortable promoting messaging and ideologies funded by Planned Parenthood, will they feel undue pressure to do so because they do not want to be perceived as having a classroom that is not welcoming to all students? Shouldn't all classrooms be safe and welcoming to students without the need to wear on your person or display in your classroom a list of ideologies and group identities? Given that Policy three-two-one, formerly known as the advocacy policy, no longer prohibits teachers from promoting their personal beliefs and worldview in the classroom, will the items and messaging and the reference to welcome kits be permitted in Penridge school buildings? Thank you.
That's it for public comment. An executive session was held Monday, August eighteenth to discuss personnel matters, and also won on August twentieth, twenty twenty-five. The school board met in conference for a retreat under section seven oh seven B. An executive session was also held prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel matters. All the details are available on the announcement section of the agenda. Is there anything else? No? I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming. Hold on, someone in the back?
Was it Ron? Was I?
Oh, you're right, you're right. Come on, lady. Sorry.
No, sorry.
Yeah, come on.
I went out to sign up.
Jonathan Russell, Hilltown Township. I want to congratulate you, Dr. Berrios, on your new contract. And I was thinking, you know, when I was on the board two years ago, and I know that somebody commented that it was hysteria and a complete disaster, but the best thing that we did was the process by which we went through and hired you. And we had late nights. We had multiple meetings a week. We went almost to twelve o'clock at night, but the process was a good process, and ultimately it ended up in hiring you, which was a great decision. That was not a bad decision. That was not, but something the old board should be congratulated for, for going through that process. Even though we had some dysfunction, we were able to come together, work together, and accomplish a great result. So I want to not only commend you on your renewal extension of the contract, but also the old board for having gone through that process. And I also like to comment to this existing board, try to give the same measure of grace that you want now with regard to your intentions, what you did or didn't do, what you want it to be perceived, to the same that you view other people. Because when you guys, well, many of you were on the opposite side of this table, you were viewing it completely different than how you want us to view it now. So I just ask you to take a little bit of measure and self-reflection and perhaps change that perspective. Thank you.
Ron, before you end the meeting, I just want to make a couple statements real quick. In regards to the Joint Operating Committee for the VOTech School, and I'm just going to make this real brief. We had a process and a procedure when we hire people that's been put into place. We've used it numerous times in the past. We've had people that apply for positions. I can't understand why people will say to the group, how come they didn't disclose that they were looking for the job? How many times have you gone to an interview and you've told your former, your existing employer, oh, by the way, I'm going out for an interview today. I just want to let you know that what's going on because I think I need to let the world know? It doesn't happen that way. When we, when Jordan looked at this position, she did not go to her existing employer and say, oh, by the way, I'm going to look at another job. She don't do it that way. She went to the job. She kept it to herself. We actually turned around and went back to her employer and to her supervisors and gained all kinds of insight, very, very positive. We had this, we had our group of administrators review this whole process. I'm going to tell you right now, it worked, it came on sterling, and I'm really appreciative that you've come on board with the Tech School. Thank you very much. Now, from the standpoint of Mr. Kaufman, we can go on for months. We can go on for years. I'm already tired of it, to be very candid with you. The Kaufman issue is now dead. This school district needs to concentrate on a couple of different things. We got a great superintendent. He's going to lead us down the path. I totally agree with all the comments. We've got a great superintendent. He's going to lead us down the path. I totally agree with all the comments made. We have issues in this school district that you better start to understand and get a hold of. It's called finance and facilities. And if you don't embrace that a wholeheartedly against all different divisions of whether it's left or right or green or yellow or black or blue, who cares? This is about your school district and functioning correctly to teach your children. If they don't have the proper facilities, ladies and gentlemen, ain't going to happen. And we're in trouble in this school district. You're looking at increased taxes for at least the next, I would say, five to seven years because of the infrastructure issues involved with your building facilities. So stop the silly games about she shouldn't do it, he shouldn't do it. I don't care about that. I care about making this school district the best we have. So let's do it. Move forward. Thank you.
And that's it? Most of which are?